I'll put the mic on then and say good morning, everyone. Both to the committee here, everyone who's in the room, and everyone who's watching online, whether now or in the future. So, welcome to Housing Policy Committee in January. And I'll just have a few basic introductions and ask the committee and other staff here to introduce themselves. We're going to have this recorded, so this is a public meeting. You know, bear that in mind. I believe it's possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and broadcast. I don't know if that actually happens. That's good. Just a reminder to turn your phones off or onto silent, just so it doesn't disturb the meeting. There's no fire test planned today. If it goes off, then get out by following people. The toilets are in the places that you should know. I don't think we've got any other members of the public here today, actually, if it's all staff in the building. So, public will be online. So, with those usual introductions, which guests-people are used to now, shall we go around the room and do introductions? Just to give my name, I'm Douglas Johnson. I'm a councillor of a city ward and I chair this meeting. So, we'll go round this direction.
Councillor Penny Baker, councillor of Sandown Ward and vice-chair.
Barbara Masters, councillor for Ettlesall.
Oh, we've got councillors for East Echelfield.
Thanks, I'm going to this side. Porter being green councillor for Gleeglis Valley Ward.
Councillor Mary Lee for representative Arnold Wood. Can I just say I'm substituting for Alison Norris today?
Thank you for doing that, yes. And just whilst we're on that, would you pass back all the committee's best wishes to Alison, who's currently injured?
Livia Malana, councillor for Park and Arbuthnot and Labour Group spokesperson.
Right, thanks all. I'll just ask the officers here to introduce themselves, so this time we'll go to this side.
Good morning, I'm Robert Parkin, Assistant Director for Legal.
Morning, everybody. Ashman Ali, Executive Director of Neighbourhoods.
Rachel Marshall, Principal Democratic Services Officer.
And just quick thanks to Amir, who's on the webcasting duty. Janet, as Director of Housing, do you want to introduce yourself, as you're on the hot seat so far?
Yes, I'm Janet Sharp, I'm the Director of Housing for Housing and Neighbourhoods Services at Sheffield City Council.
Thank you, I'm welcome. And with all the other staff who's here, thanks for attending. It's probably simplest to ask you to introduce yourselves when you come up for the item, as usual. Great, thank you. So, that's the introductions. Item one is the apologies for absence, and as councillor Lee's already mentioned, she's substituting for councillor Alison Norris. Also had apologies from councillor Wood and councillor Ickbell. So, with that, I think the rest of us are here, aren't we? Item two is exclusion of present public. I don't think we've got anything for that today. Item three is declarations of interest. So, call out to members, any declaration of interest? No, don't see any. Item four is the minutes of last time, so pages 11 onwards. Can I have someone propose that they're correct? I don't think I was flagged anything up in advance. Correct, has a unanimous approval? Yep, thanks, no dissent there. So, on public questions, so I think I'm right in saying we've got no petitions, we've got one set of public questions. I don't think the person's here, so there's a bit of a range of questions there. What propose we do is that we sift through those, send a written response to the person, and then we'll circulate that round the committee. It's probably the easiest way to deal with it, so I've had some just help answering those. Just that the person's been engaged with the committee because she came to the new tenant voices matter meeting a few days ago, and the members who were there will have met her then. So, that's, it's good to have that encouragement. Great, so just checking, there's no other public questions? No, okay, we'll go into item six, which is members' questions. There's none of those either. So, we'll move straight on to the work, sorry, yes, councillor Baker.
My apologies for not getting to speak to you before the beginning of the meeting, but I wondered if we could ask a question about the block of houses at Lower Edges that lost their roofs the other day, and what the progress is with that?
Yes, I think that's a very relevant topical thing, so if I'm being asked to admit it as a late question, then I think that will be appropriate, given we are. What I don't know is who's best placed to answer it, other than the little bit I know, but I think I'm looking at Janet Sharp. Janet, would you like to tell us where we are with Haslem Crescent?
Yes, certainly. And obviously, you know, the wind really took hold of those roofs at Low Edges. One of the things we've done is the repair service and our contractors have been out to obviously make sure that it's safe, and also to look at the arrangements we need to place, but only to make it safe, but then also to sort out the roof long term for that block. Housing Neighbourhood Officers staff were out on site, obviously, in case people needed to be rehoused, in case people felt vulnerable, and you know, and Dean Fearing is obviously here today in charge of the neighbourhood services, but obviously, they were out, you know, talking to our tenants and making sure everything was okay. So, it is a programme. One of the things that we've also done is been checking the roofs of the same type in that area, you know, to see if there is anything. We have experienced some quite significant wind, as you are aware, over the last few weeks, and you know, fortunately, the majority of our, vast majority of our roofs have held firm, and we've had no issues, but we have had isolated issues with roofs. So, one of the things that we are doing is reviewing that and also reviewing our long-term re-roofing programme to make sure if there are any particular roofs vulnerable that we need to replace.
Thanks very much for that update. I think that answers the question. I think from our point of view, as members, we were briefed, you know, in short order about our staff there. Just want to say thanks to our staff who actually deal with emergency situations like that. A, because it's actually quite worrying what could happen, also, it's quite dangerous working with, you know, the risk of roofs like that. But yeah, I think it's also worth saying that there was a worry at one point, this was a different roof that had come off, and there was a systematic issue there, and I think we found that it's not. There's clearly a fault with that roof on that block, but that it doesn't indicate there's such wider issues.
And unfortunately, Tom Smith's not here today, but the repair staff was absolutely excellent, you know, very quick response to be able to remove the immediate danger very, very quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Can we support your thanks to staff? Thank you.
Thanks, I think it's important to recognise, you know, just how well staff respond in emergencies, which almost become routine. So, good, thanks. I think that deals with item six. So, if we go to item seven, it's the work plan, and I'm going to pass over to Rachel Marshall to guide us through what we need to get on our future agendas.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. So, in the main agenda pack, the work programme starts on page 19. If you want to leave to that page, you might already be on it. And then on page 20, there is references from other councils, so we can discuss that with the committee, if anybody wishes to. Also, we've got some items that have come up that we do want to add to the future work programme, and they are the housing subsidy loss. So, that will be a follow-on report from the one that we're going to look at today, and that's being suggested to be added to the March meeting. We also have the improvement plan for full gas regulation compliance, which is also being suggested to add to the March meeting, which is obviously the next one. So, if we want to discuss those today, and you as a committee want to work that through moving forwards, and I can pass back to Chair in a minute, but just before I do, the next forward plan that's in front of you obviously doesn't include those suggestions that I've just raised, which is why I've raised them verbally. So, the updated work plan, depending on what's agreed today, will be reflected in the next work programme that is actually published and printed for the public to see. So, I will now pass back to Chair, and you as a committee can decide and agree the recommendations. Thank you. I'll pass back to you, Chair.
Thanks, that's very helpful to guide us through there. I think it's fair to say that because this committee was moved to today, so changed by a couple of weeks, there's been quite a lot of discussion to move things backward and forwards between now and March's committee. So, as you'll see on page 22, there are items that have been moved back to March, like the repairs policy, but equally, there have been items being brought forward from March to this meeting, like the net zero item. So, that's where we are. I'll take in Barbara Masters before going back to the items that Rachel's identified.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I did notice the climate statements new, but looking through the programme, there's nothing about updates about how we are progressing along the action plans, and I would ask, it doesn't have to be a long thing. I mean, we could even have simple timelines for each actions, which we don't know about specifically yet, to see how we are progressing along those timelines. And that's just one sheet of paper which could be added or put on the website. I'd like that added, please, if possible.
That does make sense in practice, because we haven't yet discussed that item, that probably suggests, could we maybe deal with that at the item, and it might be suggested as an extra way forward?
I'll bring it up again then, then.
That would be helpful. I'll leave that one for you to do that. The similar situation with the issue about housing subsidy losses, we've actually got that on the agenda as an item. So, assuming that the committee approves the recommendations, that includes bringing somebody back to March's committee, but I think that's going to be a necessity anyway. So, I think it makes sense if we just approve that now. Similarly, with the issue about gas regulation compliance, we can get that on the agenda. And then, yeah, the other substantive things are the items of resolutions from full council. So, we do need to decide how we're dealing with those. So, if you refer to page 20, Rachel referred to first of all, the first item is the request from full council to ask this committee to raise the arm locally about the refugee homelessness crisis, and request the committee to engage with the voluntary and community sector, faith groups, universities and housing providers urgently discuss this. Perhaps it doesn't work so well with the committee, so what proposes is that you ask me as Chair to take this back, speak to the Director of Housing on ways to just move this forward in practice. So, I suggest that. Obviously, I have to take any other proposals if anyone wants to be involved with that. And then secondly, we've got the issues of climate statements, which of course are on the agenda. So, with those additions, are people broadly happy with that set of items for this and future meetings? Obviously, subject to any further decisions we make on the other items on the rest of today's agenda. As you will all know, in practice, the work programme can be a fairly fluid thing, but it's important that we actually identify these tasks to do and put them on some sort of forward plan, which is why we have this item. Is that broadly okay? I'll not gain dissent here, so shall we take that as unanimously approved with those additions that Rich has highlighted?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, right, good, thanks very much, everyone. So, we're now getting on to the substantive items. So, just to run through these and be aware of time, we got through those preliminaries very quickly, so that's helpful, thank you. The items we've got coming up are the tenant and leaseholder engagement strategy, the wrap-up report on the selective licensing scheme. We've got two linked items on climate statements being referred back to this committee that councillor Masters wants to pick up on. Secondly, the roadmap to net zero. We've then got a financial issue on what's been termed the housing subsidy loss, and that can be explained. We've got a review item on the petition we received at last month's committee on the Verden Street flats. And then finally, for information, we've got the response that was sent to government on safe and legal routes of migration. Just on those items, I'm just going to inform the committee that in terms of the response on Verden Street flats, we made sure that the original petitioner was informed of this meeting, was specifically invited, if he wanted to come, and, but making clear, he wasn't, she wasn't obliged to in any way, and she's not here today, but I thought it was helpful to know that the committee thought it was of interest that she brought that petition in the first place. So, that's the summary there. I guess we should move on in short order with these items. So, the first one of those is the tenant and leaseholder engagement strategy, and I think I'm handing over to Janet Sharp again, and Peter Brown. Janet, if you introduce yourself, maybe Peter, when you get to sit, then introduce yourself, tell the committee who you are and for the record, and then over to you two.
Yes, thank you. And I hope the report sets out some of the work that's taken place to update the housing and neighbourhoods engagement strategy that came before a committee was approved in 2021. So, the purpose of the report is that we needed to update our strategy. There was a commitment at the time that we would review that strategy every three years. However, when we looked at some of the new regulations, the legislation regarding housing, and there's lots of things happening in the housing sector, and also that puts tenants at the heart of decision-making and their ability to influence the way we deliver services for our tenants and leaseholders, we felt that we needed to bring this strategy for renewal forward earlier than wait till the end date. And also to make sure we were clear on actually some of the actions that needs to take place that would underpin that new strategy, to make sure that we are changing the way we engage and support our tenants. So, since the introduction of the new social housing regulations, it was important that we reflect on the way we are engaging with our tenants, you know, at all levels, you know, by through the delivery of the services that we provide on a day-to-day basis, that's working with people in their properties and people obviously who work with the council, all services working with the council, to provide, you know, critical services, but also some of the wider engagement opportunities that there are. You know, we're doing huge amounts of work and have been for some time in terms of, you know, digital inclusion and actually working with people. We're doing lots of things on social media, lots of engagement opportunities, and also, you know, our current tenant governance arrangements, you know, and the opportunity for tenants who want to certainly be in meetings and actually do work together at a local level, you know, to make sure that, and also then to triage that bike into making sure that is reflected accurately in our tenant and leaseholder strategy, whilst also making sure that we are meeting our regulatory requirements. So, I hope that the report is fairly straightforward. Peter and his team have done quite a detailed piece of work, working with a lot of tenants, looking at the way we do things, and I'm sure he'll want to be able to answer any detailed questions. But what we have been able to do is take a wide range of views and experience, you know, so not just rely on our existing structures, but also anyone that is living in council housing, you know, so how we, what are we listening to the feedback that we're getting? Are we acting on that feedback? How are we engaging with our tenants at an early level to be able to make sure that we are, they not only feel involved, but also they feel that we are delivering our services in a way that they would see that as a priority for us? In terms of the new standards, you will see, and the regulator of social housing is creating a set of four consumer standards, and we've discussed that previously at this committee. One of these is focused on transparency, influence and accountability, and I think that mirrors the council's own values and standards. But particularly in terms of this one, is looking at influence, how our tenants influence landlords' decision-making, how tenants can understand how their landlord is performing, and how our tenants can hold their landlord to account when we don't get things right, or actually if we're not delivering the service in the way that they think that would add value to them in living in council homes. So, there's been a lot of work taking place, there's been many, many sessions with tenants, there has been lots of work in terms of frontline officers influencing and sharing feedback, whilst also making sure that we have a clear action plan that is attached to the report here today, and that this plan, you know, reflects some of the priority areas to make sure that we can fully comply, obviously, with the transparency, influence and accountability standard, but overall, you know, really how we can improve tenant engagement. So, the report sets out the consultation, it also sets out information around the surveys, and also sets out some of the priority areas for action. So, I wasn't planning on going through all of the paper, because I think it is fairly self-explanatory, but hopefully that provides, you know, an overview of, you know, where we are now, the direction of travel that we need to take, and how we need to continually evolve and involve tenants at the heart of the way we deliver the services and also our decision-making. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. I think it's just fair to say that, you know, the committee has been briefed on this, but fundamentally, as the Director of Housing has just said in the last bit, it's an ongoing thing. In some ways, we can say actually, there's not much in this that's new, because engagement with tenants and leaseholders is an ongoing and actually will be a continual thing, so I think it's setting the framework there. Peter, do you want to add something? And so, do you want to introduce yourself, because you're the only person here without a card?
Yeah, I will introduce myself, yeah. I'm Peter Brown, I'm a Service Manager in the Housing and Neighbourhoods Service responsible for ten involvement. I wasn't going to add anything to that, I think Janet's covered everything, just to draw your attention to the action plan, which I know is a key part of previous discussions we've had, but happy to take any questions on any of that.
Right, thanks very much, yes, I think it was a good overview, Janet, and it's helped for you here to take any questions, Peter. I don't know if we've got any questions from the committee, apart from what we have, so I'll go to councillor Baker first, then councillor Malana.
Okay, so say thank you for the work you're doing with tenants. It's very difficult, as I've experienced, to maintain a close contact with all the tenants we've got, because we've got a heck of a lot of them, and they're a very diverse group of people, and we have to use different methods to include different groups of people, and we have to learn as we're going along. It is similar to what we've had before, but it is developing, and we've got to develop as we go across, because communication in different areas develops, we do things differently, and we've got to not forget our more mature tenants, but keep in line with the model methods of communication that our younger tenants need and require. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks very much, I think that's a very valid comment that I'd certainly endorse. But councillor Malana?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for bringing the paper, Janet. I had two fairly quick questions. The first was, do we know what kind of results we're expecting to see by, say, the next municipal year? And then the second was, is there any additional resources the housing team will need to be able to properly implement this, or does this suit concurrently to our current work in the housing services that are forward-facing? Thank you, Chair.
If I answer the second one first, and then I'll hand over to Peter in terms of like the results that we expect to see. One of the things that we are doing is reviewing in terms of how we comply with the new regulatory standard. You know, one of the things that we have got to really look at is the resources, so I think in previous years, we've reduced the amount of true engagement resources, and what we've done, we've introduced that in our frontline services, so that's as part of their day job. I think following some of the feedback that we are receiving from tenant and leaseholders, and also, as you will be aware, you know, in certain parts of the city, there are particular issues where we're not engaging enough. And I think what we need, what we want to do as part of this strategy is take stock of that in terms of moving forward, you know, the resources that we need to join the dots, actually, actually, you know, be able to respond fully into that. So, that might be something that may need to come back, but also I'm thinking that we, one of the things that we just need to do is reflect on that. You know, we've got a lot of officers on the front line, as you will know from this committee, we have, you know, needed to make some savings in some areas, but then also invest in other areas, but also are we taking our tenants with us on that journey? And where we are, where we need to do particularly targeted action in some of our neighbourhoods is making sure we've got the resources in place to be able to do that, and maybe, you know, avoid detracting from those really critical frontline delivery to respond to particular issues on the estates. And then I think certainly, one of the things that we are wanting to do with this strategy is have some really strong and robust smart targets for the action plan, because we've also, you know, re-establishing, following the pandemic, and a number of structures in local areas, you know, some of the forums, some of the work that we are doing, and actually making sure that we can, we know that our residents know that those meetings are taking place, they know, you know, that's the place you'd discuss. How we connect with the likes is really important, and other community groups as well operating in the area. So, one of the things that we're wanting to do is not only, obviously, is presenting here to this committee, but also how we widen that out into our communities, but also to make sure that aligns with other work as well that is taking place, and also reflecting that more than half of what were traditional council estates have now been sold, you know, so there is an ongoing challenge for on the ground, you know, resources, offices on the ground, you know, dealing with very much multi-tenure housing, you know, so again, it's how we join up services at a local level as well. Peter, do you want to talk a little bit more about the results?
Yeah, will do. So, as Janet mentioned, we've got a detailed action plan as part of the papers you've seen here, and they are outcome-focused targets, and we try to make those quite measurable, really, and I think it's one of the key aims of the strategy is to make sure that we're inclusive in representing all tenant views, as councillor Baker sort of mentioned, really, so balancing that in-person access to services, using the new technology we've got within the council around the Have You Say platform, and listening to tenants who respond to surveys, and also make complaints and comments about the services. What we're introducing as part of this is a you said we did kind of feature, so it's a way of tenants making sure that we're, holding us to account, really, so that we're sort of saying, you told us this, and this is what we've done to improve services. I think that's a real key measure of how successful we are in developing the strategy.
Right, thanks very much for those answers and for the questions. I think, yeah, as you said, an ongoing process. I think we just go to the recommendations now, which will find on page 35, and essentially it's noting the outcomes of the consultation, approving the engagement strategy and approving the action plan. So, if nods all round, no dissent there, we'll take that as approved unanimously. Thank you, and we look forward to ongoing and no doubt robust dialogue with tenants. Thanks to everyone involved with this, Peter, if you can pass on the thanks to your team too. And I see you've got your name card now, so I hope you enjoy that. Thank you, thanks very much. So, next one we move on to is in the private sector. So, this is the selective licensing closure report, and this is, well, we're going to have Catherine and Matt who will introduce themselves and hopefully report on a close period of some actually very good news, and I'm just really impressed by the difference that Sheffield City Council can make as a public-centered body intervening in the private sector to make real definite benefits for people's living standards and indeed lives. If you can, yeah, sort out your M cards. Right, okay. Would you two like to introduce yourselves both and take us through a summary of the report? So, yeah.
Hi, yeah, I'm Catherine Hughes, Service Manager for Private Housing Standards.
And I'm Matt Wallston, I'm Team Manager in Private Housing Standards. Good morning, everybody. So, if you're ready to go, I'll jump straight in. So, the paper that we provided is a comprehensive final report of the scheme that we have recently concluded. I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview into the scheme and try and pick out some of the key points. So, selective licensing has been in operation down on areas in and around London Road, Abidale Road and Chesterfield Road for the period between the 1st of November 2018 and the 31st of October 2023. Selective licensing is a discretionary power that the Housing Act 2004 brought in to allow local authorities to make landlords apply for a licence if they're operating a property within a selective licensing designation. In this case, the designation was, as we've referred to it, the lack area, London, Abidale, Chesterfield Road, and it was implemented following concerns that we had about the area, that were as a result of some priority work that we were doing for about three years prior to the designation of the, sorry, the designation coming into place. All landlords who were operating properties within the designation operating properties within the designation were required to apply for a licence, naming a licence holder and a manager. It's a legal obligation for them to do so. So following an application being made, the council, the service needed to make sure that the people involved with that licence were relevant people to hold the licence. Background checks were made. We also made background checks on the properties, requesting a number of safety certificates so that we could assess the property prior to going out and visiting. The inspection programme was to, we needed to get into all of the properties within the scheme to assess the condition of the property and to ensure that licence holders were complying with licensing conditions. So whilst it's not, the legislation doesn't say that we have to go into all of the properties, but we made the decision that we were going to do so. It's impossible to assess the condition of the properties without doing so. So we made that made that decision from the start. In inspecting the properties, we carried out inspections under the Housing Health and Safety Rating System, which is a system that allows us to identify hazards within properties, 29 hazards. We rate those under being a cat one or serious category two hazards. And where we find the hazards, we can place a legal obligation on landlords to rectify those hazards to make their properties safer and thus making the tenants safer. So all in all, we issued 472 licences. We managed to get into all but one of the properties within the designated area. The property that we didn't get access to, we made a decision to not do so because the tenant of the property was having some quite serious mental health issues at the time. So that we didn't miss out completely on assessing the property, a thorough desktop assessment was made. We checked on the plans for the property to ensure that the fire safety standards were likely being met. And we had lots of interaction with this landlord with some of the properties that they owned in the area as well. So we felt that although we weren't able to get into all the properties, we had justification for not doing so in this case. So in terms of the inspections, 492 hazards were identified throughout the scheme, which is 46% of the properties within the designated area. We frequently encountered what we class as being the top five hazards. So these top five hazards were fire safety, falls on stairs, falls between levels, damp mould and excess cold. In the proactive work that we did before implementation of the scheme, these are the same five top hazards that we found in the proactive work that we did. And I think this goes to show that the rationale behind the scheme was justified and it was well informed. In removing the 492 hazards, we estimate that around about 800 people were made safer in their homes. That's based on the amount of people that the properties were suitable for. So four people in one, three in the other, averaged out across the whole of the scheme. And that was off the back of around about 700 property visits that we made in the five years. So the visits were not only to identify issues within the property, but they were also to go back and make sure that landlords were fulfilling their obligations. We are still doing a little bit of work in the area. The way that the legislation works, we carry out inspection work under part one of the Housing Act and licensing is done under part three. What this means that under part one, the timelines that we give landlords to comply with will extend beyond the schemes. Now, although the scheme's done, there are a handful. There are 27 hazards that we still need to address in seven properties. So the work is going to be concluded, we're hopeful over the next couple of months. But I thought it was relevant just to let you know that there is a little bit that is still going outside of the designation. So as I mentioned earlier, failure to apply is an offence. It's an offence under section 95 of the Housing Act 2004. And where we identified properties that were required licences, we ensured that we took the correct enforcement action to penalise those landlords for not complying with their duties. We did this proactively, by working in the area, being able to identify properties that we felt needed to be licensing. But we also did a lot of desktop work as well to sort of tie in council information that we had against properties that we knew weren't licensed. This led to us issuing 65 financial penalties in total to 33 individuals and five companies. And we also took seven prosecutions, five of which have now been heard and we've had decisions on two of them pending. Over the course of the scheme, 217 informal notices and 190 formal notices were issued. So the majority of the formal notices that we issued were requests for information from landlords to ensure that they were the people that they were saying that they were, basically, so that we could ensure that they were licensing correctly. But we did also take, we did also issue notices for seven improvement notices to ensure that properties were brought up to scratch where landlords were not dealing with us informally. The scheme has ended. It ended on the 31st of October. There is no legal provision for us to extend the scheme beyond the five years without the need to do so. I think from the report, you'll have been able to see, hopefully, that a vast amount of work was done by landlords. Many, many hazards were identified and put right. And we didn't have the evidence that we had prior to the scheme being implemented to warrant continuing with the scheme, just due to the fact that the ideas, the issues that we identified have now been rectified on the whole. The service will now revert to reactive work in the area. So we won't be, we won't be taking a proactive approach on visiting properties in the area. So the vast majority of work that we take as a service in relation to repair issues are from referrals from tenants. So we will go back to dealing with those referrals in the future. There is obviously a little bit of risk with us now not being in the area. The dedicated resource won't be there anymore. We do feel that that might lead to landlords being perhaps a little bit less proactive in terms of ensuring that they're looking after their properties. We also know as well that a number of landlords that were perhaps not operating in the area because of the need to licence, who wouldn't have been deemed to be fit and proper persons to hold the licence, may now look to move back into the area. The risk associated with us is mitigated though by the fact that we have been proactive in the area for the last five years. We, the visibility of the service now is vastly increased in the area. The tenants who are living in the area, although there's a churn of tenants, will, we will have now a higher percentage of tenants that know that the service exists, that they do have certain rights, that landlords have repair obligations as well. So we're certainly, there's certainly some mitigation there. We do also now have a better understanding about some of the landlords that are operating in the area. Not only will this allow us to perhaps take a quicker approach to dealing with any issues that we get reactively with those landlords, we can also potentially track them throughout other areas of the city better than we could do before. So in summary, property in the area is now safer than they were prior to the designation being implemented. We've taken enforcement action against landlords and managers that failed in their obligations, both to apply for licences and to ensure that they're taking correct action to undertake remedial works in their properties. The service has an increased visibility in the area. Landlords and tenants are better aware of their obligations and their rights. And the service will now continue in its duty to assess property condition and make recommendations for interventions throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Before I bring in other members, I just want to say that on page 73 and 74, the list of the stats, the actual hard outcomes and numbers of what's been achieved there. But the thing you said was, you know, there are 800 people who've been made safer in their homes, and that's incredibly important. I mean, I just want to say, actually, I personally feel incredibly proud of the service for having done this because this is such an important area of housing where, you know, we do have quite a number of people who are living in flats above shops. And, you know, we've often had the concern that they've been like living in the 1970s when the standards there. Most people are safe in the houses. Some people are not. And now, well, literally, 800 people are safe when they may not have been before. And I think actually, the fact it was needed is shown by the extent of the enforcement, the hard enforcement measures that were actually taken. So it's really important, I think, the council to show that, you know, we'll act on private tenancies. It's a really important aspect of this as well because actually, we've often talked in the past about how the scope for using rental accommodation of in the properties above shops. Actually, there's loads of capacity there for easing the housing crisis. And if we can bring those into use and show that they actually can be made into respectable accommodation, that's actually really helpful on a far wider economic scale. Enough of me. Just Catherine, did you want to add anything as the service manager?
No, no, nothing really. Matt's covered everything. Thank you.
Indeed. It was a comprehensive covering there. Right, okay. I will go to councillor Masters first and councillor Turpin.
Thank you, Chair. Clarification, really. 1.2 on page 59, you've got 99% on one property and the whole report's got so many numbers in it. Can you just clarify the number that that 99% refers to? That's all. So, you know, that's an update. The second thing is, can you clarify, I mean, assuming the landlords still have to apply for a licence in this area, even though you're not actually regulating it in the same way? So that's just sort of a yes or a no. And, I mean, and the third thing is a question, sort of, is there evidence that these rogue landlords have moved into other areas? Because what instantly sprung to mind is sort of the mind, the well-publicised issues with Page Hall. And I was thinking, reading through this, it's a shame you can't get in there, which I'm assuming isn't on the cards at the moment. But so it's the evidence, have they moved elsewhere? Thank you.
So, yes, there are a lot of numbers in the report. It is a little bit, percentages of numbers. I think that the part that you're referring to is just to say that there were 472 inspections done, I believe, isn't there, Matt?
Yeah, 472 licensed properties.
And just one of those wasn't inspected. So we just turned it into a percentage because we just wanted to sort of draw that out.
If I had decimal points in there, because I thought, did that mean a, you know, was it 1% or 99 properties? But thank you for clarifying.
Yes, no, you're right.
And sorry, and what about Page Hall? There's a story there, isn't there?
So in terms of Page Hall, we did have a selective licensing scheme in Page Hall that ended around about 2019. And we did bring a closure report. So we can circulate the closure report for Page Hall if committee members would like to see that. One of the things that we experienced in Page Hall is we concentrated what is known as the grid, you know, so the key area. And we did see some landlords selling their properties and moving to the voluntary area and elsewhere. So this is, I mean, as Catherine will say, you know, this is a significant challenge for us. But one of the things that we have invested within the service, and that's the key for integrating with, you know, how we deliver residential services in this city, is so that, you know, we have some great landlords in this city, you know, and the majority, you know, really good landlords really obviously support their tenants and keep their homes improved. But like I was, we have a number, you know, who don't do that. And I think one of the things that we have been able to do, particularly in recent years, is be able to all but preempt the work they're going to make to be taken, and how many properties, you know, are owned by these landlords, and also what can we do to change attitudes and behaviours, you know, or where do we need to target, you know, our private sector housing resources in a different way to address some of the issues. But it is an ongoing issue. And also, one of the things that we do have, we do have an increase in number of landlords with maybe one or two properties, who probably sometimes they need additional support of what it means to be a landlord as well. And that's particularly important where people are picking up right to buy properties on our estates and, you know, in terms of their responsibilities as well.
Thanks very much, yes.
And it was just clarifying, I presume landlords still have to pay the licensing fee even though you're not proactive as you had were in the past? Is that correct?
And the licensing fee is only payable while the scheme is in place, while the designation is. Sorry, just to respond as well about, you asked about evidence of rogue landlords in other areas. And I think Matt did touch on this. There is no list of landlords, as we know, which is something we would very much like to have. But where we have a licensing scheme or where it's a licensable HMO, we gather information on the people that own those properties. So where we've done the scheme on London Road, we have got a little bit more knowledge about people who perhaps don't have the best practices. So although we can't stop them operating outside of licensing, whether that's HMO or selective licensing, we've identified them and we know about them. So that touches on to what Janet was saying. It does make that sort of proactive, more desktop kind of work a little bit easier that we can try and look at where they are.
Thank you. I'm actually impressed with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that's right. So Page Hall was the first selective licensing scheme, and there was a step change in quality and investment of the area. Now the scheme's been covered as well. Great, thanks. Okay, councillor Turpin.
Thank you. Thanks for the report. It's really good. And it was, it's something that I've supported since it was, before it came in. This was really useful, really good idea and really needed in those places. So a few short questions then. What will happen now to the outstanding repairs? Was there any assessment done of whether costs of the licensing fee and any extra costs incurred by the landlords were passed on to tenants? And finally, what next? Because it seems like that you've gained a lot of knowledge, you've got a team together, you've gained a lot of intelligence, and it would be a shame just to see all of those things just kind of, you know, disappear into the ether of council history.
Is that in between my lines?
Yeah, so I'm, as I alluded to in the report, because of the way that the legislation insists is the wrong word, because carried out inspections are part one, the way that part one works under the Housing Act is we have to give a landlord a reasonable amount of time to do works before we go formal. It's also following the current enforcement invention plan that we have as a service. Because of that, some of the properties that we're dealing with later on in the scheme, the extensions, the deadlines for landlords' complete works have now been passed. But we're not going to ignore those because the schemes ended. We will continue to carry out visits at those properties to make sure that the works that we've asked to be done are done. Where they're not done and where deadlines are, we've gone beyond deadlines, we will use enforcement powers where necessary to ensure that those works are done. So that could be via financial penalties, via civil penalties as well. So ultimately, the aim is to rid those properties of 100% of the hazards that were identified. And we were hopeful that that will be done within the coming months.
Thanks very much. Right.
Just in terms of assessment on costs, that is a really good question. The way that we don't really have, we haven't any powers in terms of rent setting, but what we try and look at is the churn within the area. So what we haven't seen, it's borne out in the in the figures around retaliatory eviction, illegal eviction. We didn't get, we did get some cases. We didn't get as many as we were concerned we would get. I can't give you a paper on that and give you facts, but what I can say is we haven't seen a high level of churn. And we certainly haven't had tenants reporting that as a concern to us. I think it is something that was flagged at the onset of the scheme, that rents would increase and particularly by landlords who were obviously concerned about the cost of licensing. But we haven't seen that borne out in the evidence that we can look at.
So are you kind of, look, you're not monitoring what people's rents are, you're kind of assessing that through whether or not there's churn?
We have done so far. We have got, we have got figures about what average rental values are over the past few years. And we will look at that, but we want to include next year's because obviously the repair works are still ongoing. I know it's only seven properties, but they are still carrying on. So we can certainly share that with the committee if you'd like us to do that. Yeah?
Yeah. And certainly, one of the things that we are doing is as part of developing of the housing strategy, one of the key priorities of the housing strategy is obviously, you know, affordability. And also, one of the things that we are seeing is overall across the city is private rents increasing. And that's, and that's coming through. What Catherine's obviously, mentioned obviously is in the particularly selective licensing area. But increasingly, you know, people who are approaching the council for urgent need for accommodation, we are, we are seeing in small numbers, but significantly growing numbers of families like who are struggling with their rents. And that's certainly coming through through housing solutions. I know it's certainly coming through members' casework that's taking place. And also, that's certainly been borne out, working with colleagues in the Revenue or Benefit Service. I think that's a natural, a national picture though as well.
Thanks very much. Right, okay, great. Go to councillor Molana. Oh, sorry.
So in terms of the what next? So one of the things that we have is our strategy for selective licensing was to make sure that we would take a geographical approach where we had really strong evidence base because that's what you need to enter into a scheme. And that takes a considerable And that takes a considerable resource when the private sector housing team are gathering all that information, because everything, every other powers that we have has to be checked that they haven't were before, obviously, we, we enter into a selective licensing scheme. So what we don't do is, is, so as we bring forward a licensing scheme, we've also got our eyes on the next and the next areas. And certainly when Catherine brings forward obviously a wider strategy, that will say about the areas that we believe probably would benefit from a selective licensing scheme. And the reason we do that, you know, and as, as Matt has said, is that there are parts of the country that have done a blanket, tried to do a blanket-like licensing scheme, and they've had mixture of, of success with that. But also, there, there isn't, there hasn't been, there isn't been ability to enter into properties. So you're very much taking, you know, the people who really want to comply, rather than obviously being able to target resources to enter properties and see exactly conditions and what is going off. And we, and our strategy that was, has been approved in the past was to, right, we take a geographical approach, we absolutely blitz our resources in those areas. And we do know that then look at the next area, and the next area is part of that structure. That has proved incredibly successful, you know, for able to, to target some really difficult areas. So one of the things that we will be doing is as part of the future, Catherine's future strategy coming forward, will be set out based on our evidence and based what we know, where the likely next area is likely to be in Sheffield. So only we keep under, under review, obviously, the ones where we've been, but also have our eye on the future, you know, to make sure that we're using our limited resources in private sector housing, which are limited, in the areas where they will make the greatest difference.
Thanks very much, it's the, the most important question, what next, isn't it? Right, okay, over to councillor Molana.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I wanted to make a, the thanks to officers for bringing this report forward. You know, we know tenants in the private rented sector face particular challenges in their accommodations, especially in relation to conditions and repairs. And I'm just, again, like, like others have said, really pleased to see the results in addressing some of those really serious hazards. My question, I think you've just answered a little bit, Janet, was, you know, going to be about, are there any key learnings we will take from this scheme when dealing with other parts of the city? Particularly what you mentioned, Catherine, about, you know, some, some bad landlords moving into a different part of the city. And I don't suppose want the council to be in a position where we're sort of chasing our tail and going round and round, just moving them about. I was going to ask a question of what it would look like if the council was to consider implementing a citywide rollout of the scheme. But I think you've partly answered that already, Janet. Thank you.
I think, to be fair, yes, I mean, it's a really good question, which is the one that Janet's just answered, isn't it? I don't see anything else to add to the earlier part of councillor Molana's question.
I think, no, I think one of the things that has worked particularly well with flats above shops, obviously speaking, sorry, with our offices, is that we had some significant concerns around safeguarding and fire safety when we started this scheme. Depending on how those shops were configured and how those tenants were able to get out of those properties. And also, I think, when we start a selective licence scheme, one of the things for me that is really, really powerful is our statutory services come together. You know, so as we go in, the, you know, Catherine's offices sometimes will identify some really uncomfortable things. And also, that requires all services to work together. And I think one of the things about this, in particular selective licensing, and some of the feedback that I, I receive, not just from housing colleagues, but from colleagues across the council, is how those agencies have come together, you know, and including, you know, DDP and benefits and social care, you know, has come together, and they've worked together so that where any issues have been identified, there's been a quick response.
Thank you, yes.
Sorry, Chair, can I ask a follow-up question? It was just what you mentioned on services, actually, Janet, which sparked a question. We know that more and more young people in Sheffield, particularly children, are growing up in private rented accommodation now. Do we know about any referrals we've made to health providers or anything like that? Particularly when it comes to like damp and mould issues in private rented properties, or is that not something we gather at the moment?
As, as part of the, the damp and mould task force, obviously, one of the things we've been looking at, obviously, we've done a lot of work, obviously, that we've talked before at this committee about council housing, but we've also obviously been doing quite a lot of work in the private rented sector. And we know from, from information around, you know, sort of EPC and, and some particular issues in the private sector, that they represent probably some of our coldest homes in certain locations. And then damp and mould exacerbates that in terms of, in terms of that. So one of the things what we have been required to do is regular reporting to the government team around conditions, both in private rented homes, but also reports of damp and mould. And we've also had to take a slight, also not only really quick access into the teams with dedicated routes into the private sector housing team, but also recognise that we also have many tenants who feel nervous about reporting their landlord's issues. And so one of the things that we've also been doing is look, and that is where triaging work with other services to see, what do we know about that? Is it actually, because I think, I think as Catherine will say, you know, we have to have a reason to go into that property. And also, what we also don't want to do is see people finding that if they report any landlord issues, that they then have, lose their home, and then obviously that puts even more pressure on, on our homeless services. So what the team is, but we also have looked at is, is particular areas where there is a pattern, and we know there is a pattern of condition issues, I think that's fair to say, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think I've, I was just going to add, Janet was talking earlier about what's next, and we were talking about the strategy that we've laid out before, and I think that's part of what we're doing with that, is reviewing it and looking at the issues around damp and mould, because, you know, damp and mould is, is really a symptom, it's things like excess cold that's the cause of it. So we, we're reviewing that in line with this extra information that, that we're gathering about damp and mould, and is it somewhere, there is certain locations, certain, certain property types, and how that factors in, and does it, does it change our approach a little bit? But we, we are gathering that information as we are going.
Thanks very much, right, okay. So, final question before we move on, over to councillor Lee, welcome.
Thank you, and thanks for the report. I'd remember it, this report coming to cabinet in two thousand and eighteen, and some of the information you brought was really shocking at that time, and I think, I think the Star reported on some of the issues that you found, and you mentioned some of them. So it's, it, it was a very intensive piece of work, and has taken a good while to implement, never mind, you know, Covid in between as well. I just wondered about, because you said there was some churn amongst the tenants, and tenants are really reluctant, maybe sometimes, to complain about the landlords because of fears they have. Do we regu, will we regularly send that information to those existing private tenants about their rights and the landlord's responsibilities so they can be kept updated, particularly new ones? That was one question. And the other one is, are there any examples across the country where private tenants get involved in a private tenants association of some kind, where they can band together, I guess, or meet regularly to, a bit like our own tenants do, to ensure that their, their conditions and the landlord's responsibilities are met? Is that, are there any examples of that across the country? And is there anything in Sheffield that is maybe emerging like that? That was the two questions. And I just want to say, you know, the fact that also so many services were involved is really, you know, a fantastic piece of work that, that was, that was done, but shows how intensive and time-consuming in terms of officer time, but well worth it.
Sorry, right, it really is silly that I'm between my phones, I'm very sorry. Yeah, so going back to about tenants and knowing their rights, we do obviously work quite closely with Shelter, which is where people tend, tenants tend to go. It's difficult because you don't know where tenants are and you don't know what the churn is, but certainly in a scheme like this, absolute, like, tenants are aware of the rights. We have a really strong proven track record in terms of tenancy relations, so retaliatory eviction or illegal eviction. We've got a couple of real experts in the team, so we are very, we're on the front foot with that. So when we know we've got a case in, if a tenant in any way shares any concerns, that they feel that that complaint might result in their eviction, we have tenancy relations officers which we will then, which will contact them and talk them through their rights and make sure they're aware, and they know who to contact, and should, can't speak, should something happen. In terms of private tenants associations, we don't have one in Sheffield. We used, they're quite difficult, actually. You tend to find that tenants in the private sector and possibly in, in social will want to engage when there is an issue, and when there isn't, they fall away again. So I'm not aware of any that are currently operating, and that's just, it's an honest answer. Is that okay?
Thank you very much for that, okay. So with that, so we should move on to recommendations. Can I, can I just?
Oh, sorry, I think it's pertinent because the way the conversation's gone, I feel I've, I've made a mistake in not declaring an interest in this, because I thought it was purely about licensing, but I think no. I'm a part owner of one rented property, nothing to do with the licensing area, it is within the Sheffield boundary. That's what I wanted to say, thank you, before the recommendation.
Absolutely understood. So, I think we can take that as declaration of interest in this item, that's a personal but not a pecuniary interest that affects this discussion, this particular item. So, okay, if we can note that, that's good. Yeah, thanks for lugging that up. Okay, so recommendations on page fifty-eight, and it is a simple one, simply to note the closure report. Don't want to choice over that. So that's the formal recommendation, which I will take as being agreed, no dissent there, thank you. If, I just want to say, I think it reflects all of us saying enormous thanks to Catherine and Matt for bringing that forward, and for all of you, for everyone who's worked on this, this project. And I think the sentiment is going to be that we look forward to what you advise us about the next areas. Thank you very much, okay, right, so change our people on the desk and move on to the next items. So, we've got item ten is next on the climate statement, so we're going to have Nathan and Dean there.
I think I ought to make a, a declaration, a personal declar, declar, declaration of personal interest. I'm a retrofit coordinator and director of a company which is concerned with the retrofitting of buildings. And that, I think that probably tenuously applies to this and the next item.
Right, okay, so, further declaration of interest, so items ten and eleven, personal interest from councillor Turpin, because it covers that subject matter, rather than anything you're involved with as a pecuniary interest. Right, okay, good, that gets that out of the way. Thank you very much, it's allowed Dean and Nathan to take your seats there. Just one chat, so we've got item ten on the climate statements and item eleven on the roadmap to net zero, so I'm assuming we're going to present those as separate reports, but obviously there's some overlap. Let's stick to the usual plan then, so, yeah, would you like to introduce yourselves and introduce the reports, and then we'll go for questions, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, I'm Dean Butthuff, I'm the head of housing investment and maintenance.
Good morning, everybody, I'm Nathan Robinson, I'm the housing decarbonisation manager.
Just in terms of the, the context of the report, the items ten and eleven are complementary in relation to each other, so there will be some crossover from the information from one to the other. Members will be aware of these because we've brought these to a number of knowledge briefing sessions over the last couple of months. The first report, the climate statement, is a report that was taken to the Strategy and Resources Committee in December of two thousand and twenty-three, and that proposed the establishment of nine individual climate statements for each of the individual committees. So what you'll see within this report are all of those climate statements. The housing policy committee statement is on page twenty-three, just for clarity for that. The purpose of each of these statements is basically to reaffirm the support and commitment to the targets that Sheffield City Council has set around addressing the ongoing challenges of climate change. And they reinforce how division, how decisions will be made within each committee that contribute towards the council's net zero ambitions and adapting to the challenge of climate change. Some of the, the climate statements also set out five key areas. One, the current policy context within the housing sector. Two, the potential implications if the city doesn't act further in relation to decarbonising its existing stock. How the committee's decisions can contribute in relation to the future direction and the decisions that are made on this particular area. Probably very important as well is the societal and the economic opportunities and benefits associated with adapting properties in relation to decarbonisation. And finally, the key action is the current committee work plan and council services that strongly support the work we're undertaking in relation to climate change and net zero. And as I say, lots of the information that will be covered will be in item eleven, and we'll have that conversation in another couple of minutes. That's just the, the context within the report, Chair, and as I say, we're happy to take any questions on that.
Right, thanks very much. Nick, anything to add at this stage, or should we just go to questions?
No, nothing further from me, thank you.
Great, thank you, all right. Questions from members then? We got anywhere to, to start on this? Yeah, councillor Turpin.
Thank you. Yeah, so thanks for bringing the report, it's good to see that it's, the climate emergency is actually being taken a bit more seriously now. And clearly we can see from other reports that the, the amount of carbon reduced, in fact, I think it is in this report, isn't it? Three percent over three years is pretty pathetic, you know, we actually reduced more carbon before we were trying to reduce carbon, so maybe someone will explain how that happened someday. Don't want to say much on this, a small bit of pedantry, that in this report it says eighty-six percent of the council's carbon is from housing, but in the next report it says eighty-nine percent, so whether there's a typo on one or the other, or if, I wonder if that could be amended in, by my, my textual amendment in whichever report, it's incorrect. So, I just want to say that, you know, the, the council housing has, has issues and statutory obligations. And we, we really need to be looking at, at, at housing and, and the climate emergency holistically. You know, in tackling damp and mould, in tackling fuel poverty, the cost of living crisis, we are also tackling the climate emergency, and you can say that this is the same for other committees. In transport, reducing congestion and improving air quality also tackles the climate emergency. It also develops jobs, it also grows the economy. You know, there's, there's, there's every reason to do this and no reason not to do it. And then, and I was just wondering about the, the way that we look at, at tackling the climate emergency in the council, specifically in this committee, and I know that, that we are pressed for money. But, but this is where we can make the biggest impact in our own emissions. And I actually wonder if, if, if climate change is in the wrong committee, and maybe it ought to be in here. And then, really, I don't, I guess that's, that's all that I wanted to say, is that, you know, we've got this, this committee, and we've got all this housing, and this is how we achieve net zero as a council.
Thanks. Not sure how to respond to that, but I mean, it's a really important point, isn't it? Just about the significance of the housing service in terms of the council's own emissions, and why this, this issue is really important in this committee. Janet, you got your light on?
Yeah, yeah, as I always say, I think, you know, housing is a key part of the council's ten-point plan for, for, for the climate emergency. And one of the things, and the reason for this statement is we clear the areas that we may focus on from this committee that then contribute to the overall response to our climate, our climate change commitments. I think that's really important. Housing is a massive, you know, sort of issue in terms of how, how we become climate compliant and our road light to net zero for all ten years. And also, we are doing, you know, quite a lot of work, not just on the council housing, but also on our private sector, and Nathan and colleagues have, you know, be doing an awful lot more here, awful lot of work in terms of, you know, really engaging and trying to make it as easy as possible to be able to invest in their homes that are not owned by the council. And also how we bring in money into the city that will help all ten years where that is possible to, to do so. But for me, I think it's really important, we have obviously a clear climate strategy for the city, and there is, you know, robust partnership around that, and housing is a key part of that. But it is important that this committee focuses down on what we are going to do about housing in this city, that actually homes need to be warmer, people be able to be able to afford to put their heating on, and people are being able to live in comfort, and that's a key priority, I feel, for this committee. I think it's really exciting to have a statement for the first I think it's really exciting to have a statement for the first time at this committee. And then I think our future delivery plans will look at how we, you know, working with yourselves as a committee, can make significant improvements into the delivery of that wider strategy.
Thanks, that's actually a really important observation there and, you know, and I think the point you make is that actually the welfare of all the people living in our homes and the cost of living goes absolutely hand in hand with all the work that's been done across the council to work towards net zero. So that's a really important thing, so there is no conflict there. We just need to do as much as possible. Dean, will you want to come in on that point?
It's just for the clarity of the data that's in the report, councillor Turpin. Yeah, apologies for the inaccuracies within that, the correct figure is eighty-six percent, should be across both reports.
Thanks, thanks for clarifying that, I'm sure there's different ways of calculating, I think it will change over time, but yeah. The, the point is eighty-six percent of the council's mission is, you know, a huge amount, so this is why it's so important. I'll go to councillor Molana next.
Thank you Chair, I'll actually keep my question for after the net zero item actually, because I realise it links very closely. But I do want to clarify a lot of the sentiments that councillor Deppen expressed. And I think we have massive opportunity within the council, particularly within this committee to be doing some good work. And I do, I suppose we're all just desperate, aren't we, to actually have an actionable plan and reach our targets by twenty thirty? Yeah, I'll save my questions, thank you Chair.
Well, thanks, that's actually a very helpful approach there. I'm just wondering how we as a committee deal with this item now. So if you look at the recommendations as drafted, they're on page three of the supplementary report that's got this item in. And essentially what we are asked to resolve is the thing in part B there. So revolves, it's satisfy the actions contained in the statement of climate commitments are reflected in the work programme. I just wonder whether we're in a position to do that fully because actually the climate statement that we've compiled with a lot of input from a lot of people all around the committee, members and officers, actually is, is quite a wide ranging thing. And some of what people here think, I mean, it might be sensible to really note what's in here, but make a real commitment to come back to review this in, and I'm thinking maybe the June meeting of this committee, whoever's on at that time. Because I think there will be more things that we probably need to plan for now. And I think they probably aren't reflected fully on the work programme. And it's really because we're coming up to the end of the municipal year, so we don't actually have that much stuff we're planning ahead for next year. It, it may be sensible to go onto the net zero item next, see where we are with that and then possibly review that. Just so that we, I, I think it's to make the point that, as councillor Molan and interpreter said, that we don't lose sight of some really important actions being identified in here. I don't want to go away without them being on a work plan somewhere. Councillor Baker, you're looking.
Looking a bit concerned as well, Chair, thank you, as whether we can actually act, ask what will be a different committee. So it would be a request to them to look at it, wouldn't it?
Absolutely.
And I'm sure they will probably take it up, but we would have to do it as a request, I think.
Absolutely, yeah. So we, we do have some items on the work plan that are identified as things that this committee's identified as things that the committee needs to do, but without a date being set, which in practice means it'll be after the end of this municipal year. So I, I mean, we can put them in there, I don't see any conflict with that. The point about the work plan actually is it doesn't bind a future committee. You know, committee is always going to be slightly different after May. But that's fine, it's just a case of making sure that we've got these flagged up as something that, you know, we think now should be considered by who was on this committee at some point in the future. So I, I wonder if that's the way forward, we've got the written report here. So that would probably mean turning this recommendation into saying, resolve that. That we, yeah, Rob's looking at me, so that's probably a good sign. But I think something to say that we, we bring this back, we note what's in the statements now and bring it back for a committee in June. Rob, what's your, I think, any issues on that?
Yeah, so resolving to bring a report back to the June meeting, which specifically does, does what? That it, it's examining. Just trying to think, so it's essentially, you, you want to be, the, the resolution as drafted is resolving that the committee is satisfied that the actions contained within the statement of climate commitments is reflected in the work programme. Get the sense from the discussion that there's a, not, not fully satisfied, so there's, in order to be satisfied of that, there's, there's an additional action, so it's bringing something back. And I'm just trying to understand what's contained in, in what that report might say in June.
So, so what I'm thinking is, I think we can certainly note the contents of this report today. I can, I think we ought to be cautious about saying that we are satisfied, it's all reflected in the work plan. Because actually there's a lot of really good things in these climate statements that are probably not currently on the work plan as drafted. And we need to do a bit of work there. In practice, that means that we will need to do some knowledge briefings with officers to get the speed and work out a bit of a plan. So come back with a draft proposal. And then we'll need to ask the June committee to look at that. So, so I probably suggest we, yeah, note this report. Ask that a report is brought to the June committee to advise on informing the future work plan. Rob, as long as you don't say anything that, that, tell me that doesn't work.
That, that, that seems to me to, 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 to make sense. So it's essentially noted, so essentially we, the recommendation becomes consider the statement of climate commitments. To note the content of the report. And instead of the last two limbs, it's saying request that a report is brought back to the June meeting to advise in detail. Jump in if, if that wording doesn't work. On how the statement. Statement of climate commitments is.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're getting there. I'm just suggesting we, if, if the sentiment is broadly agreed here, we'll leave Rob to sort out the words afterwards.
Happy with the gist of it.
Yeah, let's do it. Janet wants to come in, we've got a suggestion, but if we can move this on.
If, if it will, will help. I think it would be important, I think it would be helpful to have something in the June because there is a lot of commitments in here in terms of which ones we think we may work on during the twenty-four, twenty-five maybe committee year. But also I think my understanding is in other committees, one of the things they've done is one of the, they've set those things that they will work on on the committee work programme is a six monthly review. And so that's keeping it, we're not losing sight of the commitments. But also to make sure that we do something with the statement and it does translate into a course of action that then the committee can monitor. I'm happy to work with Robert afterwards on terms of the form of words that might help if that would be helpful and along with Catherine.
I think we're all getting the same direction, aren't we? We're, we're saying there's a programme work here, we need to get it, you know, sorted in due course and Robert can tidy up the wording. Do people sort of feel that general sentiment is there, councillor Turpin?
Thanks, yeah, I agree that if, if all of the proposed actions in the report are not on the work plan, then we can't agree to part B and part C does seem a little unclear. So yes, we need to make a plan to put these actions on to the work plan. I'm just a bit concerned that in January, we're deferring these actions to a meeting in six months' time. And, and just want to make sure that whatever recommendation we make today doesn't hinder the development of this plan. And, and actually make sure that work is, is done, you know, right away with urgency.
Yeah, okay, so what I'm suggesting is that we need to deal with this in our knowledge briefings, et cetera. So this is all the work that the committee does behind the scenes. And, but it's just, we also need to have something on the, on the public record to show that there's continuity between what's being asked of us today and what actually will be taken in the future. So yeah, your, your point exactly. Can you just take in councillor Baker then, councillor Lee?
It is a case of we need to see what progress has been made. That's all we're asking for, we're asking to see what progress has been made because we need to improve this. And if we don't think there's been sufficient progress, then we might have to increase our input, something like that.
Absolutely, yes, councillor Lee?
Yeah, similar to Penny really. And I guess, I think Janet was saying that there were some points are easier or maybe to achieve than others or to make progress with on others, so it'd be good to know what those would be. And what is then making the others difficult and what we might need to do, if that makes sense, yeah.
And I think, you know, what I'm suggesting for consideration, you know, is that maybe at the June meeting, we as officers will work through the summer to actually look at what those priorities would be that we can bring forward. You know, in terms of like cost fraction and with some real smart targets in terms of what we're aiming for and by when. And June has set that. And then, then through the committee year and future years, is that then maybe there is a performance report against those priorities that as, as officers we can be measured against that. But also, you know, this is a moving feast in terms of, you know, how we can attract external funding from government and how we can do the things that we can do that's within our gift to, to deliver on. And the things that we want to champion, but also to be reaching out, you know, for government and any other funding that is available. You know, to be able to deliver some of the other actions as well. But also you can keep it under as part of a performance, of a performance delivery report. You know, so that we set that out at the start of the year and the things that we will do during that year. And then obviously we can be measured, we can bring a performance report against those priorities if that would be helpful.
Right, thanks. I think we're on the same page and we were just talking about the page formatting. So Rob's got a, a form of words we could possibly agree to just to move things on, then we can get to the next area item. Councillor Massey, do you have something urgent that needs?
No, it was just that when I first raised the point about the work plan, I think actually Janet's addressed my concerns that it wasn't on there. And I think you've elaborated on what could be there, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, that is, that is the point. Robert, would you like to read out the four words that you've put together and then I think we can hopefully move this on?
Yeah, so just picking up on councillor Turpin's point as well as the point on progress of all of the statement of climate commitments. So, so the recommendation becomes, we stay with limay, which is to consider the statements of climate commitments relevant to the housing policy committee. We note, and, and note the contents of the report, then it becomes to note that the statement of climate commitments should form a part of all decisions coming to the committee as part of its duty to consider the climate impact of individual decisions, because that's a constitutional commitment. And then finally to request the report is brought back to the June meeting on the progress of the delivery of the statement of climate commitments. And, and a, 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 an explanation of what additional items are required.
Thank you very much, yeah. With that said wording, if there's no dissent to that, can we take that as, as approved as we'll move on? We'll get officers here to tidy up those standard words and, and I think I'll leave that in your hands. Thanks very much, I think it's a really important thing, there's some really good stuff in here that everyone's contributed to. And it's really important we don't lose sight of that. So we just need to make sure it can be tracked through and that the, the public who are following the official records can see that there is a line of progress there. So with that, if everyone stays in their seats, we can move on to the next item. So item eleven is the net zero item, so again, I'll hand it over to you Dean.
Thank you Chair, yeah, the purpose of this report is to brief members of the ongoing work that we have been making in relation to the route map to net zero, but it also supports, we've just had the conversation, the, the ongoing delivery of this climate statement. And we will be bringing back probably many future reports, the future committee, future committee meetings over the, the next few months that articulate how we're going to achieve some of the requirements within that statement. I think what this report gives more than anything else, it, it gives a, a, an understanding of some of the financial challenges that we are facing as a council in relation to meeting some of the expectations that are, that are coming out of central government and achieving the climate statement. Within the HRA business plan, it's been very clear that monies have been set aside so that each property reaches EPCC by twenty thirty. Eighty million pounds have been set aside for that and it is an ongoing commitment to achieve that. And we will report back to committee on a routine basis how we are progressing in relation to making sure that we are hundred percent compliant in achieving that particular target. One of the big challenges that we do have in relation to the housing in neighbourhood and the, the council housing sector is the resources that are required to move our properties then from EPCC to completely net zero. And we commissioned RLB, which is Ride Levered Bookmill, to undertake a piece of work on our behalf that we could then use to compare how our peer organisations across the country are working towards meeting the net zero expectations. See if we're an outlier, whether there is some consistency in terms of how people are approaching this particular issue and the, the costs that are associated. I'm going to be talking some very big numbers when I'm talking about the investment requirements in our existing stock to bring them up to a net zero standard rather than the EPCC standard. And RLB did a piece of work, which has been validated, which shows that we need approximately one point six billion pounds with our existing stock. And that's at today's prices. If we add inflation on with that, and all right, hopefully we're not going to be continuing with twelve percent inflation as we've included within this report. But if we do that up until twenty thirty, we're looking at around about two point four billion financial requirement to actually bring our homes up to standard. Even if we had the two point four billion today, we have challenges within the supply chain market because we'd have to spend four hundred and eleven million pounds per year from now up until twenty thirty to actually deliver that. There isn't the supply chain that is out there. We've never delivered any programmes that are four hundred and eleven million pound per year to actually improve our stock. So we need to understand how we do that. The report sets out some of the work that we're doing in relation to retrofit and the monies that we're getting in from central government at the, at the moment. But based on the monies that we are getting in from central government to support this particular project, the maximum we'll probably achieve at the moment is twenty million. Twenty million against two point four billion expenditure requirement leaves a massive gap. So one of the future conversations that we will need to have with committee is looking at future HRA business plans in relation to how we set our future capital programme. But very clearly within the, the climate statement, how do we lobby central government routinely to make sure that we are accessing the resources that we can? But also with our peer organisations and fellow local authorities say, this is a major issue nationally for us that we cannot deal with this individually Sheffield City Council, it's got to be a collective dialogue with central government that says, where is this money being released from? So the future reports that we'll be bringing to committee is how are we, how far are we getting with those consultations and the lobbying? How much additional government resource can we draw down? And Nathan's team are doing some excellent work in relation to accessing the current grant levels that we're getting that are making a significant contribution towards some stock, but not to the majority of the stock. And we will continue to look at new technologies in relation to the future capital programme work that we're doing. And, and everybody's probably heard on the news, air source heat pumps, ground source heat pumps, how we're using those new technologies to replace gas technology in the stock that we have got, external wall insulation. But unfortunately, that has all been factored into the RLB work that aggregates up to the two point four billion cost. So there is a challenge, I'd say the detail is within the reports, but, and me and Nathan are happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much Dean, right, so I think over to questions first of all. Councillor Turpin, did you indicate, yeah, go on then.
Just me, just me and Barbara, okay. Oh, good.
Thought they'll all jump in, but yeah, maybe make a start, yeah.
Thank you, cheers for bringing this report. So it's a mammoth task and that's really difficult to get your head around. But I just want to help you, right, so to be near carbon zero, we only have to reduce the carbon footprint of housing by eighty percent, not a hundred percent. So that's good. We're expecting the grid to be cleaned up, that's another twenty percent. So we've got to reduce the carbon footprint of housing by sixty percent. It's the fastest, cheapest reduction in emissions that, that anyone, anywhere is going to. reduction in emissions that anyone anywhere is going to get. I welcome some of this report, but there are some bits that I think there's a lot about heating systems. And I have a problem with that because I really believe that it should be fabric first. And when we improve the fabric, the next thing we improve is ventilation. If you've got a really insulated house and a gas boiler, the carbon footprint's pretty low. You know, if you're going to replace that that gas heating system, then it's going to take a long time to get your carbon and your money back. I also think there's a bit of an obsession with individual heating systems for homes, you know, we talk about air source heat pumps. It's again, it's the same. It's like one home, one boiler, one home, one air source heat pump. Don't think it's the most efficient way to do it. It's, you know, we can have geothermal heating, we can have solar. Lots of our homes are in blocks, you know, they really lend itself to, you could have, I don't know, well, there's one, two or three something geothermal heating systems for a block of 20 odd flats, you know, whatever, however that would work out. Loads more efficient, loads cheaper. All those big flat roofs, you know, lend themselves to solar generation. We could have solar water heating if we wanted to, or we could have electric heating. You know, we can have communal, community energy storage. There's loads of options that would make tackling these issues a lot more efficient in our housing stock than it would do in the privately owned housing stock. That I think we really need to look at. I would also like to see our, the council develop its own workforce and training. Because I know that you've said that we've got good, what's the word you've used, like supply links. But it's also why that knowledge that there isn't enough of that, there aren't enough businesses delivering this kind of work, you know, even on recent LAD2 funding, it was, I think E.ON won the contract and then subcontracted it. So we're not really feeding into our, supporting our own local businesses. And, you know, E.ON don't have those skills or infrastructure either. So if we can develop our own workforce, we can train our own people, that can spread out into our city and we can be leading in that industry. And they were actually the only notes are made, you know, it's just that, as I say, I think it is really good that the work that's being done. But I think that we're still caught in some of the traps of looking at this when there's still a lot to be learned about doing what has to be done. Thank you.
Okay, so we got insulation first, block heating and communal heating and then jobs and skills. I just wonder if it's worth, before you come in there, Dean, actually for take councillor Masters first, or one of you, and then ask Dean to respond to those collectively.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, so basically, sort of, I'm all in favour of district heating. Anybody who knows me?
Oh.
No, I'm always on about sort of extracting mine water, heat from the mine water we've got in Sheffield, which is appropriate for some places. And one concern is about heat pumps. Now, I don't know whether sort of when councillor Turpin talked about geothermal energy, he was referring to ground sourced heat pumps or something more substantial than that. That's fine, because it's interesting what can be developed. But I think it's also the fact that it mentions air sourced heat pumps. Now, I've read a few reports, but I can't see a detailed scientific study on this about sort of if you have loads of air sourced heat pumps, it actually chills the air considerably, which dramatically reduces their efficiency. And so often, air sourced heat pumps are mentioned, and I think even in sort of, I think it's Wakefield, they won't have them on flats simply because the downward draft you get from the cold air just sort of negates so much of the work you do elsewhere. So I think sort of it's a comment, but the way you're nodding heads suggests that you actually know what I'm talking about. And there is, so you're not just sort of going all out for air sourced heat pumps because they're only appropriate in certain locations. So it's a reassurance someone's after. Thank you. Yeah, I've got it.
Right, okay, thanks, yes. Sorry, do you want to come in on that one, if it's, if it matches?
Very similar, Chair. So thank you for a very detailed report, which actually helps because it identifies numbers for the first time, which is much appreciated. Looking at it seriously and looking at some of the problems I'm coming across in some of our types of properties, it's very clear that insulation and ventilation along with insulation and draft proofing are two things, a group of things that we can do quite cost effectively on lots of different types of properties quite quickly, if we can get the finance to do that, which will make, begin to make a difference. I accept that technology is very new. Solar is practised, but we're getting some steps forward from that as well. Take the point, we've got a hell of a lot of, well, 3,804, 38,478 properties all with roofs, and we could look at solar. But we need to look at it at a way that serves areas, I think, rather than properties individual. And we've got to look at the research. And I think that's what I'm trying to say, so we've got, Chair, we've got to look at the researchers out there. We've got to look at what we can pick out of it to make an immediate difference to tenants and to us. And then we've got to look at what we can do medium term and long term. I accept a lot of this is down to funding that's going to come in from government. But we've got to be aware that our HRA account is primary for the use of tenants and keeping their properties fit for purpose. And this going forward has to be part of that. So we have to consider that in there. And there are some simple things there, plus the advice to residents that if they're buying a new stove, they need an electric one, really. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, okay. Let me just take those. So you've got the mine water idea and then some general session. Dean, do you want to respond to?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just to give councillor Turpin the reassurance that we will be using a fabric first approach in relation to how we're doing it. And we've got 11 different archetypes across the city and the solution to each of those archetypes will be a slightly different solution in how we do that, not just in relation to the fabric first, but also in relation to how we use the emerging technologies in relation to whether it's a heat pump or whatever it might be, particularly on high rise tower blocks, maize and eggs that we've got. We'll have to look at that. The cross cutting themes that come out of this work will be reported back here on a routine basis. We've had a regular conversation about damp and mould. Damp and mould very clearly in relation to fabric first, insulation, ventilation, that is very clear and it comes out of this piece of work. And whilst it's not a Pandora's box and a solution to everything, it unlocks some of the solutions to this particular piece. One thing that we'll be bringing back in March committee is an outline asset management strategy. So the asset management strategy will look at all of this holistically in relation to the monies that we've got within the HRA business plan, where we can spend our monies, what additional monies we would need then to be able to deliver this kind of project. And we'll be coming back through knowledge briefings and future committee reports, probably with some very tough asks in relation to where are the priorities for the future spend within our asset base? What does that look like? Knowing full well that we potentially got a 2.4 billion shortfall in relation to delivering this fabric first approach. But if we know how much money we've got to spend, where do you want us to prioritise that spend on our existing stock at this moment in time whilst we still continue to have those conversations with central government in relation to unlocking additional resources to bring into Sheffield?
Thanks, thanks, Dean. That's actually helpful, just to set the frame for what, you know, the committee will have to say. Do you want to just say anything about where we are with the supply chain? There are lots of good things you can say, I'm sure. Just very briefly, any comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of really good work being led by the council in terms of employment and skills, in terms of working with colleges and other local institutions to build up retrofit skills within the sector. You know, Dean's already mentioned that we have both within council homes and private sector funded projects, that we have lots of retrofit activity. Not enough, but it's happening within the city. But it's clear when we are designing and delivering these programmes that the supply chain is limited, you know, and a key priority is about trying to deliver that through local Sheffield firms and targeting the local economy. And while we're able to do that to some extent, again, I think we've already touched on it, is, you know, often we're looking to those kind of big national industry providers that are a bit ahead of the game and, you know, are sort of at the forefront of building those skills. So certainly there's lots of work being done in Sheffield to kind of really push that along. And that's working with lots of different partners to achieve that.
And Chair, if I can just add in there, obviously this is a national picture. So in terms of supply chain and having the skilled workforce to be able to deliver this, we'll be looking to do this Rotherham, Barnsley, Doncaster, every local authority within the country will be trying to access the same skills base. So, yeah, if we can start to develop our own and understand what that means for us and get those cost efficiencies that we can drive through the HRA, absolutely, we will support that.
Thanks. Well, I'm glad you said that because even within the, you know, massive financial constraints that we've got, the scale of the Sheffield City Council as a provider of housing, you know, means that, yeah, there is that, it's good to know that you're maximising that leverage there. We want to come back on something really important on that, Nathan.
Thank you, Chair. Just a point against councillor Turpin's, because I agree in terms of, and I think we've discussed, that air source heat pump technology is kind of ubiquitous solution. And whilst it can be incredibly effective, and I've seen firsthand, and I take the point that the evidence is still limited, you know, you can go online and see lots of cases for and against where people will say it's cheaper, more effective, and then the complete converse. I think there's lots of maturity still within that technology. And even in the short time that I've been in this role, it's advancing in terms of how performant and reliable it is. So it is a great base of technology, but it doesn't solve all the issues. And I think it's a really good and relevant point because we have legislation, it's now primary legislation in terms of heat networks being moved forward. And actually Sheffield as a city is part of a pilot. So we're working with DESNES, which is the Government's Department for Energy Security and Net Zero, as part of a pilot project and using Nordic Energy as one of the key consultants to effectively map zones across the city that are best positioned for heat networks. And of course, we'll be looking to leverage that through industry, other commerce, and again, both in terms of council stock and private homes. The sort of route of travel is that there will be a position within probably the next two, one to two years where it will be mandated that homes will be moved on to heat networks. So again, that's probably still quite early, but lots of work being done to explore, you know, the council's own existing networks, obviously the sort of big networks within the city, Violia, the E.ON, and the Waste Plan, just near to Medahall, all these kind of big institutions generating this excess heat and how that can be leveraged in terms of bigger heat networks. So it's a very complex picture, but certainly that assurance that we are factoring all those things in into that solution.
Right, thank you. Thank you very much. Just want to come back in. Councillor Malana, did you want to come in with a question?
Thank you, Chair. I had two questions, really. The first was, do we know how we map against other cities and their plans for achieving net zero? Because now you mentioned that this is a nationwide issue with funding and resource allocation. And previous conversations with, just across the housing team really, particularly with Nathan, has shown that there is some good work going on in the area in Sheffield. I suppose my question was, what do you need from this committee in order to be able to coordinate a truly actionable plan for the council?
Thank you, Chair. Just in relation to the work that we've been doing, we've been looking at our peer local authorities in relation to delivering this and they're in exactly the same position that we are. It's a big financial requirement and we've aggregated up and you're talking a trillion pounds worth at least investment to bring into the housing sector to bring the stock up. So we're all scratching our heads, but we're working collectively across the groups that we're all part of and Janet's part of many of those groups, not just to rely on central government funding, but it's also to release other funding streams that can help us within this as well. Some of those come with their own challenges and their own problems, but we are working our ways through those. I'm going to pass the second part of that over to Nathan because he's probably got more information. Sorry, Councillor Malana, can you just repeat that for us?
Yes, it was just to ask, you know, what do you need from this committee to be able to coordinate an actionable plan?
In fact, I'll pick that one up as well. In relation to that, it means that coming back, as Janet said earlier, in terms of the climate statements, I think we'll be coming back in relation to, one, the commitments that we've put within the climate statement and the support that we require from this committee to be able to put those in place. Also in relation to when we bring the asset management strategy, we'll be understanding the conflicting priorities that we have within our investment programme, the limited monies that we've got within our capital programme, and it's that reprioritising of the work. But what we've got to say is it's not all about paying notices, this. It's the preventative work that we can do as well. It's around the communication that we can put in place and it's making sure that we're getting out and sharing those messages across all of our 38,000 customer base so that we are actually making a positive contribution to easing some of the burdens of the cost of living crisis as well. So we will be coming back to future meetings saying, this is a challenge, these are the recommendations, and we'll have the debate at that time.
Right, thank you. And obviously just bear in mind, this is an interim report we've had from the consultants and we're looking forward to the final bit there. Jen, did you want to come in now and go and take councillor Baker's?
I'd just like to bring in a colleague, obviously from the council's climate sustainability team on a particular point that councillor Turpin raised on numbers.
Thanks, that would be really helpful, yes. Laura, would you like to just introduce yourself? In fact, if anyone's got cards there that don't belong to you, then maybe you just drop those on the floor or something out of the way. I don't know that you've got one yourself, Laura, but if you want to introduce yourself for the record, please do. And then as you say, your say.
It's on. Yes, Laura Ellendale. I'm the lead for housing within the council's sustainability and climate change team. It was just in relation to the percentages that you were talking about. And I just thought it would be really useful to clarify because in terms of the calculations that go into working out how much these reductions are going to be, what comes from this, what comes from that, it's extremely complicated. So I just thought it would be useful to clarify. So when we say net zero in relation to the council's emissions, we're talking about a 95% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. So not just the carbon dioxide, but other greenhouse gases as well. When we went through the pathway report, it was identified that the measures that we could take in relation to council emissions, including the housing, would get us to 80% reduction. But it's a bit too simplistic to then separate that out into sort of 20% of that 80% is grid emissions, 60% is from specific actions. So we try to just keep it as it's an 80% reduction. That does include the decarbonisation of the national grid as well as increased renewable generation. But yeah, so we just, we try not to go to that level of detail because it's just, it's not that simple, unfortunately. And then just in relation to the remaining emissions, because we can get to 80% out of what we can do in the council, it's just to clarify that we would need to be looking at potentially offsetting or carbon sequestering. And actually, that would potentially be outside of the boundaries of Sheffield. So I just wanted to clarify that. There is some methodology in the annual climate report, if anyone is more interested. But yeah, sorry, it's really, really boring, but I just wanted to.
Thank you.
To clarify. Thank you.
Far from it. It's not boring at all. I think you say it is complex and we need plenty of people working on this, you know, really important stuff. So yeah, thanks for doing your part on that. Thanks for that in contribution, Laura, really important. Councillor Baker?
Thank you, Chair. Actually, in a way, it leads on from that. Quite amusing, really. Really good to hear you talking to other authorities. Exactly right, they've got the same problems and similar problems to what we've got. I presume you're talking to the universities as well because they're right in the middle of this. And it's not all down to the council, some of it's down to us as individuals. And I have to sort of say, Chair, we're having some very interesting experiments around the city. I think most of you will have heard about our cow molly, which is a farm in my ward. It's doing some work in conjunction with the university, which means that it'll take the waste from cows and make itself not only 100% energy efficient along with the other methods they've got, but will be able to put something back in the natural grid as well. So an adjacent farm to it is So an adjacent farm to it is experimenting with all sorts of other techniques. The gentleman there is part of a company who is really into this. He's another one who wants us to zone everything and put anything. And you know, that will work in some of our council areas. A bit of a concern there because as we all know, council estates now are quite often more than 50% no longer in council ownership. They are, you know, so we have to consider that as well. But there is a lot happening in Sheffield and around areas and we're linking into it and we're at the beginning of a journey. I'd love to say we're halfway down it, but I don't think we're anywhere near like that yet. And I think it's a journey we've got to do together and do our best to achieve what we can. Good to hear you talking. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, that's a good way to round that up. And I'm glad to hear you talking about the waste from cows. So no one can accuse any of us of talking about the waste from bulls. So good, okay, yeah, right. So do you want to have a look at the recommendations there? Councillor Massey, do you want to come in?
Yeah, it's, it's really sort of because I've been following the conversation. I mean, we've talked a lot about heat saving, but with insulation and that, we've got to think about ventilation in summer as well. And I can't really see that featured. And I mean, you know, heat exchanges, I mean, my understanding is, I mean, I think they've got fancy a technical term now, but it's a way of sort of keeping homes warm in winter, call in summer. And isn't this part of the communication to tenants and residents that it's not a case of just sort of insulating your home, you've got to be. So I think it's a communication there. Really pleased to hear about heat recovery in Meadow Hall because I've been asking about this for a couple of years, about how do we recycle the waste heat? And a couple of, and a year ago, I was told it wasn't being looked at when, so I'm pleased that's being done. But with the advances in technology, do we actually have the expertise to evaluate the emerging technologies before we actually start signing checks? And I really, it's the reassurance on that because obviously you're getting information from other people, but there's so much going on. How do we keep abreast of it to make the best decision for our housing stock and for Sheffield? Thank you.
Right. If you can answer that fairly briefly before we come back to the recommendations, obviously the point on ventilations.
Thank you, Chair. Just in relation to the, the emerging technologies, we will be using external consultants and experts in relation to that to provide us in very simple terms, the benefits that the new technologies can bring, but also the risks and issues that are associated with that as well. So we can have a very balanced conversation around what we procure, what we install and how we maintain. That's one of the big challenges for us as a service, not just what we install, but it's how do we maintain that on, on the ongoing basis. Just a final pick up on the point in relation to insulation and ventilation. As a sector, we are moving on quite a lot that I was privy to a scheme 10 years ago in Scotland that we over insulated a property. And there were no, there was no ventilation into the property, no drafts whatsoever. And by doing that, we actually created a number of health issues as a consequence of that. So we've moved forward from that and we're striking the right balance in terms of the insulation and the ventilation to make sure that health and wellbeing of people living in those properties is paramount.
Just very quickly to add to that, and that is that we are adopting a standard called PAS 2035, which is a retrofit standard. It's not regulatory yet, but I wouldn't be surprised to see that happen in future. That sets the framework that when you are retrofitting a house, any property, that you design in a full ventilation strategy. And again, that avoids all these potential future issues.
Right, thank you. So that rounds up on some really important points there. So just having a look at the recommendations, so it's page two of the supplementary report. There are three items there that I'm sure no one will have any disagreement with and we can endorse. I just wondered if we should just add into something to reflect, you know, the, the main thrust of this. So the main thrust of this is we, we know we've had the interim report from the external consultants, but we haven't yet had the final report that addresses many of the things that Dean and Nathan have identified today. So the committee could perhaps just make a note that we look forward to receipt of the final report from the external consultants. And I think maybe the second thing, given that I think we all agree, just make stating the obvious that actually insulation, the fabric of, perhaps we endorse the fabric first approach, incorporating insulation with appropriate ventilation. We know this, but might be just restating this for the record, just so you don't all get too carried away with, you know, the, the new technology and, you know, new heating schemes. Insulation is a really important starting point. We're members happy to endorse that. And if so, we can just maybe draw that into a form of words that makes coherent sense. Paul, agreeing or disagreeing?
Agreeing and just note, I mean, it makes absolute sense to me to put something about fabric first and ventilation in. As, as we've made the effort to mention, heat pumps, which, you know, you, you would put in last anyway. And then actually, if you put them in first, then it's going to cost you more money because they're not efficient enough. And I also just wondered on, on the second point, where noting the funding shortfall, proposing any alternative options for officer examination to meet that shortfall. Is that, so the, the, the report also notes that it's, it's prices have gone up and they will continue to go up in the future. And the, and the, the cost of dealing with the climate emergency is only going to increase. So I just wonder if we can do something about accelerating that 9.4 million pound a year investment and actually front loading it. And, you know, it's, it's clear that we are expecting and relying on government investment in order to do, to complete this work as the whole country is. And without that investment, nobody's going to meet the targets anyway. So rather than saying, oh, we're going to spread this out over the number of years, let's really do our best to front load and accelerate that investment as, as part of, I know that's a long way to put something that we would like to put into three or four words.
Yeah. I, I just wonder if that's something where we, we need to look into a bit more. There's maybe some of the offices can sort of note and take away with, rather than try and get into quite a complex discussion now. Definitely is the sort of way we should be looking at. That would fit in, I think, quite nicely to the report when it comes back with, in the context of the final report. So, so I think that's kind of covered there. Are we okay taking on those recommendations just to move this on for today? So we've got the three bullet points there, plus something about looking forward to the final report and then, you know, restating our approval of a fabric first approach with insulation as the primary aim. You've got nods all around with that and all you said you agreed on that point. Let's take that as agreed unanimously on that point, move on. And like some of the other things, this is very much an ongoing piece of work. So thanks to Dean and Nathan and Janet for all the work on this and we're looking forward to plenty more. Thanks for your contribution there, Laura. That's, that's great. If we go back to the agenda and move back into the, the main packs there. So we've got three items now which should be relatively short, they're updates really. So I'm hoping that we can move through those fairly quickly. So just as I speak, John Squire appears, almost as if you're ready to talk about the item 12 update on the housing subsidy loss. So with that perfect timing. Would you like to introduce yourself? We've got the written report here, so which you can take that we've read. They have a brief introduction on that from either of you and yeah, over to you.
Right, thank you. So, so we present to you regular reports regarding the financial position. And what we have raised in recent months is the housing subsidy loss and the regulations. But that report is quite brief in terms of what is causing, is what is causing that. So what we've, what we've done is we are bringing a substantial report to the March Committee that looks at the implications of the regulations and also what we're going to do about that. Because one of the, one of the key issues is that homelessness and people being unable to afford their home is creating significant pressure in the city. And as a result, we are being, we are facing the impact of the housing benefit regulations and how that is affecting Sheffield City Council. So in, in agreement with, with the Chair, what agreed is to, to present this report today, which is really to give an opportunity to set out what the regulations that we're talking about actually are. And this is obviously where John Squire, Mr Ben's, this is an incredibly complex situation in terms of how we have to assess housing benefits, you know, and the regulations and how they work. So, so we will be having a more substantial report in March in terms of what we do with the impact of the application of those regulations. But we felt that it would be worthwhile just going through what they are and overall how they are impacting on the finances. That's a little bit more information than what we normally provide as part of the routine finance report. So I'll be turning over to you and to pick up any questions.
Thanks. Over to you, John.
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to take any questions from members arising from any matters out of the report, if anybody's got any questions now.
Right, okay. So questions from members on this. I mean, just, just once people were put in answer. So just to be clear, so we're going to have another report in March with a bit more detail on that and some solutions about what the proposal is. I just wonder if you can just be a little clearer about when this issue arose. Because I mean, although it's said it's not a new issue, and I think that's correct. And I think you're right in saying that actually we're looking at the effects of the 2010 regulations, so of, of, to with housing benefits. So we're not looking at a new change in the law in recent times. But it only seemed to become an issue really right at the beginning of this financial year when suddenly we, we turned up with a massive overspend that we frankly hadn't been expecting back literally 12 months ago. So just check, I mean, am I missing anything there? And then I'm just going to look around and see if members got any other questions.
I think it's twofold. I think there's been a significant increase in homelessness as a result of changes in homelessness legislation and the additional duties put upon local authority. We've also seen significant increases since Covid in homeless presentations. We've also seen a proliferation of schemes being introduced in the city by non-registered providers, providing this type of accommodation. We have very little powers as a local authority currently to prevent people coming to the city and setting up supported exempt accommodation schemes. The regulations are quite weak in terms of the powers that we have. There's a plethora of case law attached to this area of housing benefit administration, none of which has moved the regulations forward from 13, 14 years ago, as, as Chair acknowledges. And in fact, that case law has actually reaffirmed the quite low bar that's required for organisations to meet in order to be able to set up these schemes and be, to be able to receive higher levels of housing benefit than general needs properties. On the flip side of that, the subsidy goes around housing benefit means that we don't get back every pound that we pay out to those vulnerable people in a lot of circumstances. And the report does, does detail some of those instances. By way of example, as a rule of thumb, the average housing benefit award to a provider of supported exempt accommodation, that's a non-registered provider, is around £300 a week. And we probably receive round about £100 in housing benefit for that award subsidy. So we've got a gap of £200. We're paying out £300 and government gives us back £100. Similarly, for homeless accommodation, emergency accommodation, you're looking at nightly charges of round about £70, £80 a night. And we can claim £98 a week back in subsidy. So a weekly stay at £70 a night is £490 and we'll get £98 back in subsidy, which is £400. So the numbers are quite significant. And as the pressure on homelessness increases or even levels off on current levels, we will continue to see those pressures.
Thanks for that explanation, yeah. So I think bottom line is that we all know that because of the national legislation, housing benefit doesn't go anywhere near covering the actual cost of accommodation. And because we've got now so many people in temporary accommodation, I think it's fair to say that basically all our council and housing association temporary accommodation is full and we're having to use some of these providers that we would prefer not to use, but such are the numbers. And you might at some point want to touch on, you know, whether it's reflected as a national picture. But before we do that, let me just take questions from councillor Molana first of all.
Thank you, Chair. I know we've had, you know, a similar item to this committee fairly reasonably as well. And I mean, it's astounding, an 8.4 million projected loss. I mean, the number's astounding, but also, you know, that just means that there's an increase in vulnerable people needing this service and in any cost. My question was, is there any indication from government, you know, considering the, the scale of the problem and how many councils are faced with this very same problem? And is there any indication that there'll be a change in the way they deal with this really in, in all separate areas?
And I think that's, that's two parts. So, so there is a huge amount of work taking place with, with local authorities across the country and also working with the government team. Sheffield isn't alone and for some local authorities, this is a major financial risk for them that you will have seen in the news. So we are working together to, to, to actually be able to provide the level of detail of the implications that this has. You know, where there isn't enough temporary accommodation, the risk this places on local authorities. And also, you know, with, with the unregulated sort of exempt providers, you know, it is, is a real significant issue for us. And it also requires a national solution. And, you know, so one of the things that we have been doing is, is working with other local authorities. We're working as a group, but also working through what, what, if, what are the potential options, but also what can the government also do, you know, to support local authorities who are finding themselves in, in this situation. And one part of that is to look at the regulations regarding how housing benefit is calculated. And I'm sure John will be able to, to comment on that. But to date, we haven't seen any, any changes in terms of, we know we need to have accommodation for some of our most vulnerable people. But also we know that, you know, in some ways, it, it shouldn't matter who provides that accommodation. But as long as obviously there is, there is full cost recovery so that that, that risk does not fall within local authorities. And so there is an awful lot of work together. I think we'll be able to provide more detail in the March report in terms of other things and do. But I think we also need to continue to work across all local authorities so that there is one voice on this. And, and, and that voice from officers in those meetings is that this is a significant risk for local authorities and we've got to find some solutions for this. And some things we might be able to do ourselves as, as, as an authority. But also some things like the government need to help and support local authorities so that we can help find a way through this without it having significant financial risks for local authorities.
Thank you, yes.
Just a really quick one. And do we have enough, I mean, do we receive enough funding to be able to invest in preventative services so that vulnerable residents don't end up homeless in the first place?
Most homeless is, is largely a housing general fund service. And, and as you will have seen in previous reports like to this committee, you know, you know, that there is not only pressures, obviously there is pressure on lots of services of the council. And, and this is, and so one of the things that, and we've also have got new duties. You know, we had the Homes, you know, Reduction Act that placed additional duties. And, and my understanding is that there are new responsibilities coming forward for us. What we have to do is take stock of all of that and then look about how we can deliver services for vulnerable. But also I think we are now starting to face the significant impact of a lack of affordable housing in the city. Because if we, if we had more, more of our, of, of more affordable. Because if we had more affordable housing, then as homelessness increases, we have more flexibility. And I think, you know, we're now seeing the impact of that. So we've got to think creatively about how we provide homes, how we work with our landlords, and also how we make sure we've got enough on accommodation. And as John says, so that we're not reliant on hotels, bed and breakfast, and short-term placements. And that will come together as well as part of the future and forward housing strategy.
Right, thanks. John, did you want to come in on anything there? Or take a couple more questions, then we should perhaps move on in view of time and the fact that we're going to have another report in March.
Yeah, just a short comment in terms of the focus, Janet. It was talked about there, it was predominantly around emergency temporary accommodation. In terms of supported exempt accommodation, there's a couple of things happening. Obviously, this issue is a financial burden for a lot of local authorities. Some local authorities have a disproportionate impact, even more than Sheffield. And there's a lot of lobbying going on to central government to actually review the subsidy rules. It does seem somewhat perverse that we're administering a national benefit on behalf of DWP, on behalf of government, following the rules that they set, but being significantly financially penalised for doing so. So there's the financial aspect. There's also a private members bill went through Parliament recently and got enacted just before Christmas, which has resulted in the Supported Accommodation Regulatory Oversight Act coming into power. And although the detail from that act and the powers and duties it will place upon local authorities has yet to filter down to us, it's hoped, even by virtue of its title, it will give us more powers to check and challenge the proliferation of schemes in the supported exempt accommodation arena and provide some checks and balances within that space, which could result in a minimising of the loss of subsidy, pending any changes to the subsidy rules. So that will require us to work across council departments, I think, to develop our local strategy based on what actually comes out of government guidance in relation to that act.
Right, thanks, okay. Just a couple more questions. But I'm thinking we should probably get this booked in for a knowledge briefing at some point, looking at Penny and Nabilah there. Penny, do you have a question?
I don't want to ask a question, no, thank you.
Shall I go to Paul first, if you want some time to think about that? Council Turpin?
Thanks. So this might be completely not even me, but with losses of £4, £6, £8 million a year, would the quick solution to this, for the council, to just buy a big hotel?
So some of the options we are looking at is how to increase supply for this type of accommodation. And I don't think the council can do this on its own. And I think this has to be, and this is why we're working not only with ourselves, what we can do, what registered providers can do, but also, you know, where we have obviously, you know, really good and trusted landlords that we work in the city. We have to look at, you know, in the context of how we manage an increase in homelessness, and that's all part of the homeless prevention strategy. But within, you know, just providing accommodation, we've also got to make sure it's the right type of accommodation. You know, many people that we find presenting in homelessness have significant safety and vulnerability issues. And so we have to make sure we've got the right type of accommodation in the right locations, with the right support around them, to ensure obviously that their safety and also wellbeing. It needs a strategy of how we're going to approach this. Part of that may well be looking at, you know, acquiring numbers, but also, as you will have seen from the council's finances, the council doesn't have a huge amount of finance as well to invest or save in this area. And that's one of the things that we are looking at, is that what can we do as a council? What can our partners do to help us in this space? And what really, some clarity of what is our ask, you know, of government funding that is available, that could help us to bridge the gap on the finances of some of this, you know, and particularly where we need to increase the supply and provision of more appropriate homes, that that may ease the pressure. That, I think, in some detail will come back as part of the March report.
Right, thanks. Yeah, we will look forward to that. But yeah, let's just think of that idea. Can the council just buy a big hotel? Council Baker, you read just your question.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I wanted to say thank you for the report, because it actually puts in black and white what we've been talking about for quite a while. And you can actually see how horrific the figures are. I think the other thing we have to realise, that this is something that has crept on us very slowly over a relatively council-wide short period of time. Because, I mean, I remember just coming up to Christmas 2009, we had nobody in B and B in Sheffield, nobody at all. And when you look at the figures now, they're horrendous. And to plan for something that is so up and down like that is not easy. I think it's frightening the difference different groups can get from the financial support from the government. It certainly feels to me like, oh, well, will that local government beat this up? It doesn't matter. And that's just not right. Appreciate all the work that's been put in by local government associations nationwide. And thank you, Janet, for all the time you spend talking to other groups, because I know you do. And it does feed back help and support and ideas. We've discussed the hotel thing before, and I'm happy that we can carry on discussing these things. Perhaps that map, and we don't know, do we? And it's no good talking about something that's pining's gap, but it is right to think outside the box. Because I know your staff work really hard, and I've spoken to some of them in difficult circumstances, where somebody presents at five to five on a Friday night, and they've got kids, and you have to find them somewhere. It's not a job I'd want. It really isn't a job I want. And I appreciate the help and effort they put into that. But we've got to go forward, we've got to find other ways of doing it. We've got to accept that these numbers aren't going to go away properly in the next decade that we'd like them to. And we've got to put something in place who will make sure that these people who are highly vulnerable, as you've said, have got a secure place.
Right, thank you, yes. Take Council Lee first.
Yeah, I think it's really quite alarming, isn't it? What's happening here, absolutely alarming. It's not just, it's about what are the causes of homelessness and why were they different in 2009 and what's happening now? And I know Covid has probably had an impact, but it's so complex. And I really would, you know, being new to this committee, first time I've sat on the housing committee, understand, you know, in depth what those homeless figures are about and what's driving them. But it just seems these non-registered providers have jumped on a bandwagon of some kind, and where they, is that right? I'm going to ask you that question. That they've jumped on this bandwagon. How much demand are they creating because they are there in the first instance? And how much are they just responding to what is there initially? And are those people that are there accommodating all coming from Sheffield? Are they coming from out of area? I know that in my patch, we've had families transferred into housing from other areas in the country, you know, down south, you know, where you, why? No connections with Sheffield. I don't know if you can, I don't, whether you can answer any of those questions now?
If you, Janet, if you can keep it steady brief, just because that's a massive area of, yeah, but yeah, a good question, but yeah, thank you.
There are some significant issues, as you have set out, and all of them, obviously, are things that, you know, we can influence ourselves, but also, you know, the legislation in the Homeless Reduction Act significantly placed different duties on the council. And that has had a significant impact of us. But also other things, you know, cost of living, you know, and people being unable to afford their housing, and lots of other things as well. I do think it warrants a knowledge briefing to go through homelessness, because I think this is then, this will make it easier, I think, to be able to then work through not only the impact now and the financial risk now bring future. But as John mentioned earlier, one of the things also is about what our legal housing duties are. So for many individuals, we will owe a duty, as you will know from some of, obviously, the casework that we've dealt with. But some individuals will present themselves to the council, and we don't owe a legal duty, but we will provide advice. And when we're providing advice, you know, there are exempt providers that will provide a service. And one of the things, one of the challenges that we have is that I'm sure that many exempt providers provide a really good service. But what we don't always know is matching what those individuals need. They certainly need a home, but how much support do they need? How much support are they receiving? And is that the most appropriate way to ring the bell? And whilst we're not commissioning at times, it then makes it difficult and less transparent. So one of the things that we are doing is looking both in terms of how we provide advice and also looking at what is available in the market, and also how we can have a better relationship with exempt providers, which then in turn might help when the claims come into the housing benefits service, to be able to be confident that what is being provided is actually represents the best outcome for people. And on the issue, Sheffield, you know, many local authorities make out-of-borough placements wherever there is space in the country. And I know, you know, there has been obviously many, a number of MP questions about this as well. What Sheffield tries to do with our homeless is keep people in the city. That's probably where their support network's in. That's helpful when there is that move on. And also to be able to make sure that they can sustain their future accommodation. But I think with the pressures on many other cities up and down the country, sometimes they can't do that, and so they will make placements into other cities. And that's why you will see that in some times, as we're placing in hotels, there are other local authorities also placing in those hotels as well. And one of the things that is a priority for me is make sure that doesn't provide a safeguarding risks and to absolutely clearly understand who's in these hotels and have a really good relationships with the hoteliers, which we do in Sheffield, to make sure if there are any other risks associated with that, that we need to take into consideration as part of our strategy.
Right, thank you for that. Just conscious of time, I'm just wondering if we can move to the recommendation on this, bear in mind we've got it to come back at the March meeting. Bob, you have to...
Actually, you'd be relieved to know that Council Lee raised my two questions, which was, were these non-registered providers driving the problem? And how much is, because of the cost of housing here and the rental potential, and is it attracting people from outside? So more or less answered, thank you.
And you've got an answer to that, that's good. You also said it's a good question. Thanks both. So page 79 is a recommendation simply to note the information we've been provided with. So I assume everyone's happy with that, no one's disagreeing. I just wonder if we should further note formally that we look forward to the further report in March, again, so that we can show the continuity. Everyone happy with that? Community is what we're doing, isn't it? Okay, so if we just add on that second limb of the recommendation there, good to cut this unanimous there. Just conscious of time, we've got five minutes, but we've only got, we've got two items left, but we are really only for information. So just want an indication of whether anyone wants to have a long discussion on this, such that we would extend time, or whether we can deal with these in fairly short order. So both for information, I mean, I'll go straight to the Virgen Street petition one. So essentially, this is, as you know, petition was brought last month, this committee agreed of its own volition to ensure there's a space of bringing back here. There's reports there which you've had, and I think the headline is Moustreatment starts tomorrow. Janice, is there any further update on the auditing? Yeah. Dean, as you've been so patient, yes, come in and introduce yourselves.
Dean today, obviously. Dean's had a service, obviously, for the neighbourhood service team. And, you know, I would like to say that Claire Lane, the neighbourhood manager, has done a considerable amount of work to coordinate services on this, but Dean's happy to pick up any particular questions around Virgen Street.
Well, thank you for appearing, Dean, and being so patient there. I'm just, if there aren't any questions, we can hopefully just approve this and end the meeting on time. If we do need to extend time, then we can do that. But I think it is what it is, you've got the reports there. I'm not seeing any questions, so that might get you off the hook a bit, Dean. Shall we just note this? I think the recommendation on page 90 is just to note it. Dean, anything urgent to say?
I think it's the briefest appearance ever, I think, Chair.
Indeed, yes, that's right. Well, thanks very much. Right, okay. Yeah, indeed, yeah. Your presence is always useful. Thanks, committee, yeah. Shall we take that as noted? Thank you very much. And then final item is, again, for information, so this is on page 95. This was the government consultation list, and we have a response there that had to be sent in by the deadline of January, was done with their officers. Council Molana?
Thank you, Chair. I promised a very quick question. So with the Home Office's changes in their policies of giving asylum seekers who are granted refugee status 28 days to find housing and leave the accommodation they provided and reducing it to seven days, do we know the impact that will have on the housing service for the local authority? And is there anything we can do to, I suppose, yeah, like, is there anything we're placing to deal with that?
Yes, one of the things that we did before Christmas is, you know, the streamlined asylum process, and there was a big rush on applications just before Christmas, which did have implications for the Housing Solutions Service, certainly. One of the things we did is we had, and I chaired the asylum and refugee group, and what we did is we held a workshop with all partners, because it's not just us, voluntary community sector services are key in part of that conversation. And what we are finding, obviously, is that although this is putting pressure, it is still being managed. But again, you know, from the previous conversation, is we are placing people in hotels and in emergency accommodation, because we, and we're also, but we're also working with landlords and private landlords and housing associations, see what we can do together. What I can do is share both the, what was covered in the workshop, because the workshop also resulted in a number of key pieces of work that we would do, but also a summary of what we were facing. But certainly, we have a significant shortage of accommodation. And, you know, and also, any new sort of presentations to housing solution is giving us some significant challenge. The purpose of this, and it might warrant a further maybe presentation at the knowledge briefing to go through that and what the streamlined process is, it gives us very little time to turn around and find accommodation when we know that we've got a shortage of accommodation in the city by and large. What this will do, this report, is they ask for information and data, and you will, if you will see, you will see on our response, that not only housing provided quite a lot of data, but so did our colleagues in commissioning in children's services and health, and also migration Yorkshire, and obviously City of Sanctuary that went into our response. The Home Office will review all of those responses, and then they will come back to that in terms of what they believe is Sheffield's sort of fair share and how they would like us to support. And at that point, it probably warrants a more detailed conversation on that. But probably one of the things that might be helpful is a detailed knowledge briefing on this. But also recognise that we have a fantastic record of supporting refugees and asylum in this city, as a City of Sanctuary as well.
Yeah, thanks, John. Again, really important thing. So, I mean, we're at the guillotine, so unless anyone actually wants to extend time, I think we're actually at the end of the meeting, we're being asked... We're being asked to note this, so if not all round, I think we can note this. I think it's probably worth expressing some note of thanks to the voluntary sector partners who contribute to to this, um, you know, reflecting the intense amount of work that goes on there. Um, so that's the last item. Um, thanks for your generous forbearance. Um, people can get to warm up a bit now. Um, so, yeah, thanks for attending. Council Morlana, same.
Um, just as a very last point, Chair, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Janet Sharp for her many years of service in this council and for supporting me as when I came on to commit to his new councillor. I'm sure many of us will have seen Ashman's email about Janet retiring. Yeah, I just wanted to say a massive thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely, Janet. I wasn't going to put you on the spot, as it's just come out now, just to to counsel us before it goes public. But but yes, I think we've all had the email this morning that you're going to be stepping down towards the end of March. So, um, you know, it's been a huge tenure that you've had here. So, um, as as has been raised now, and maybe we can thank you more formally at the final committee meeting of the municipal year. Um, but yeah, just say, you know, an acknowledgement from all of us here, definitely speak for the whole committee here to say, you know, huge gratitude of thanks there. And there's a fair story in this, isn't there? So, um, you know, of how many years. So, yeah, thanks, Janet. I don't know if you're, if you are, as you've been put on the spot, you're welcome to say anything.
It's certainly obviously not not um being easy. But, yeah, I've, you know, I've had, you know, a wonderful career with Sheffield City Council. Um, and and also I think, you know, in my time in housing, you know, also I've been, you know, privileged to lead this service. It's been an absolute privilege to lead housing over the years. And also, I think during my career, um, I know I have received the most wonderful support from elected members throughout my career. Um, and I think that's helped shape me and also shaped me to be able to lead the service. Um, you know, there's some great services that are delivered. There's lots of challenging things that we need to do as well. Uh, but thank you, um, thank you today. Not being needed decision, um, I am here for a little while. Um, and that, and I'm sure I'll catch up with with individuals of the committee, um, you know, before before I go. Uh, but also hope that I'm leaving for you in safe hands a wonderful service. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, yeah. Please give it round, of course. Thanks, Janet. Um, and yes, as you say, yes, you're not going to us yet, and you've got plenty to do first, so we'll see plenty of you. Um, so we'd rather meet into a close. Thanks, everyone. And, yeah, let's make a move and warm up.